I'll call the meeting to order at 6:02. Good evening, everyone. Fantastic news hearing, talking about students in school. That's wonderful to hear. Maybe we start with a little bit of a quick round of applause for everyone. We'll go with a virtual round of applause. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work and planning, and this is what it's all about. So with that, we'll get into the fun stuff. All right. So Esther, I don't know. Did we want to record this, or we just didn't do notes?
I am. I actually started for once before you had to remind me.
Oh, there it is. All right, that, there, it sounds good. I don't believe we have any non-public topics tonight. Excellent. All right. So I'm going to start with visitors. I see a couple of names here. Is there anything, any topics that are, that need to be brought before the board before we jump into minutes and everything else? Right, hearing none. We will move to the minutes of October 14th. We had both a public and non-public meeting minutes on that evening. Did anyone have any modifications or suggestions in terms of what needed to be changed on that? I thought there was.
I had a few edits, Eric.
Okay.
Just bear with me so I don't crash the car.
Sarah, why don't we come back to you? Why don't we go through some of the other ones and we'll let you add that, add those in when you get to the safer space.
Super, super idea. Thanks.
Okay.
I got a couple.
Okay.
There's on page, well, as when we get into the Q and A, unfortunately, they're not numbered, but there's, there's a question, have you considered allowing kindergarten kids to go every day? And the answer was if we return in person, most likely class sizes would increase, did they mean decrease? And kindergarten kids cannot go more often. That make sense?
No, I think, I think the, the answer was, the question was, could they do it with those numbers? And the answer was if, if we offered everyone, every day that the numbers would increase and therefore we wouldn't be able to do it because of the distancing guidelines.
So should we change that? So if we return, if, if kindergarten returned in person every day, most likely class sizes would increase, and then that would be right, and kindergarten kids cannot go more often.
Yeah, if we were in turn in person, most likely the class, yeah, the class sizes would increase in kindergarten, which would, I mean, I think we can clean up that answer to reflect what it was. My, my recollection was if we returned in person, more parents would opt to send their children, which would then impact the ability to manage the social distancing.
Correct, Eric. That's exactly what we were, what I was attempting when I answered it. I don't know if I wasn't clear. Okay, and then, second one word to go. Oh, um, have we, on the 24th, I think this is the 24th still. Okay, under section eight.
Oh, you're on the 24th?
Is that what we're doing? Oh, we're doing the 14th. Okay, wait a second.
We are, we are on the 14th to start.
Yeah, I'm just, where did the 24th start? No, I'm still on the 14th.
Okay.
I'm still on the 14th. Okay, so under number eight, board goals will be postponed until next meeting, MOA, blah, 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 health and safety potion. I think we mean portion, B O R. So we're not making potions, but that's all I saw.
Okay. Good call. And I read over that twice and still didn't see it.
We possibly have page numbers on those, just so it's easier to find things. Is that?
Yeah, that would be.
It's just easier to, like, I'm on one thing, and then all of a sudden, just easier to navigate.
Well, so I think the, the challenge there may be, I mean, Esther, I don't know, does it maybe make sense to have those as separate files instead of embedding them into the board packet? Because what's, what's going to get messed up is when it goes into the board packet unless we have page numbers in the board packet.
We can, she sent us the minutes, secretary sent us the minutes separately. We can just have her page, page number, the minutes. You don't number all the pages of the board packet.
But I think what will happen is, is when they get merged together, you'll lose all the, the numbering is the point there. Unless they were a separate file.
I think it's a scan, because I think we just scan it. I don't know.
Oh, but it's, it's crooked on my screen, and I thought it was just me. Okay.
It's a scan, so I think we might be okay. I'll double.
Okay, gotcha. I was questioning whether or not one of those Q and As was a little bit crooked, but I convinced myself that it was from staring at my screen for 10 hours. Any other suggestions for 1014?
Hi. Yep, I had a couple. Okay, so I did number the pages on page six, under the vote to adopt back to school plan. Just the orientation of that paragraph is all the way to the right, so we can scooch it to the left where it starts with Mr. Vonderlanden.
Well, that's weird.
Yeah. Also on page six, and also on page six, under the vote to hire additional bus monitors and custodial staff, there's a sentence that says needs to a change, so we just need to add B. And then I had the same thing about the potion.
I have some.
Go ahead.
On, I believe Sarah's page six, Ms. Magery Moats to adopt back to school plan. It's a vote, not a moat. And it does need to be my, it doesn't need to be P R A S in that same sentence, in that same line.
Aaron, you broke up. What were you saying? In the east of what?
My whole name is Ms. Garcia. It needs to be Ms. Garcia D. P R A S.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
No difference than Vonderlanden.
Right. A lot of letters.
Three different words. Yeah.
Yeah, then the new, the new requirement for board members is going to be short last names. All right. Anything on the non-public minutes from that same day, the 14th of October? I didn't see any.
No.
Onto the school board meeting, school board meeting minutes for October the 28th. I didn't see any in that. Pretty simple.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll do it.
Motion by Cheryl. We have a second.
A second.
Second by Erin. Any further discussion? Going with the roll call vote, we'll start with Erin.
Aye.
Carissa?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Sarah? And I'm an I as well. All right.
Do we have any other minutes that are outstanding?
No, I don't believe we, we did get to the meeting minutes the last time. I had asked that the October 28th be added because that was a separate meeting, so I believe we are current.
Okay, did we include, maybe Esther knows this, did we include comments from the community in all of our, in all of our minutes? I don't think we did.
The first time that I've seen.
Yeah, just the chat log is what I think we added in this one.
No, I've been adding, I added parent comments.
Yeah, that was, I think, Jen, that was you, Jen, right?
Yeah.
Jerry, sometimes it's been a paragraph form, I think, if it's just been a visitor making a comment, so it doesn't stand out like that manuscript, because that was from a chat.
So like that first one that we did when there were.
Actually can't see the chat. I couldn't see the chat last time, so they were transcribed.
There was a, a meeting where we had a lot of commentary, not just questions, and I don't know that those got into the minutes. I just don't know what meeting that was.
It would have been, it would have been a September meeting.
The one where you announced that you were going remote? I think that's.
That might have been that one.
Yeah, comments were added. Yeah.
That was August.
That was August.
Well, we, we also had one in September that was after that, so.
To my knowledge, all of the community.
They were in there. Sarah, if you are, Esther, if you want, I can share my screen just showing that the August 5th one had all the Q and A in there.
I believe you if you say that. I just don't remember reading all those comments, because we had a lot.
So if you look back, the board packet for 99 has it.
Okay.
Yeah, trust me, they were added.
They're there? Okay, if, as long as they're there, I trust you on that. Good. Okay.
Can we do some follow-up conversation around some of these questions? I was reading through the notes, and I just did have some questions, or is that for another point in conversation today? Tonight?
I would imagine a lot of it falls under return to school. One, so why don't we sort of, can we table it till we get to the return to school piece?
Yep.
All right, in terms of board reports, there is no chair report this month. Financial report, did I see?
Molly and Michelle are triple booked tonight. So our general fund summary was in the packet, no major changes, no unexpected costs for our current budget. So we're still standing with at over a million with our balance now, so we're looking good. Most everything that they have been able to scrub and encumber, they have, so that's a pretty accurate fund balance. Unless there is any questions I can bring back from Molly and Michelle on that, I'm happy to do that, or I may be able to answer myself.
I wanted to know about the reimbursement of the P P E costs. Did we find out about that?
Yeah, can you hold that question until I get to the safe funds?
Yeah.
Awesome.
So with that, I guess we will jump right into the superintendent report, and which leads us to the board report and safe funds, so.
Awesome. So our board report, we, some exciting things. We had our second meeting for developing a portrait of an educator in SAU 16. About 30 people there, teachers, administrators, two rev consultants are helping us facilitate that. It's going really well. I know Kate was there. And a lot of input, some key words and key ideas for Portrait of an Educator, all related, connected to the Seven Tenants of CBE. We hope to have a draft. We're going to bring that to the full joint board. Probably January, February, March, sometime in that timeframe, depending on how the committee continues to work. Remember, that's going to be connected to the evaluation and supervision document that we have, not so much in STRATAM, but just so you're all in the loop. Everywhere else has the same format. It's based on Danielson, as well as STRATAM is also on Danielson. That's about 36 years old, the Danielson model, and we know there's been a lot of tons of changes in education, and so we really wanted to go, we're hoping to go to a strength-based, asset-based system of supervision and evaluation instead of deficit-based, based off of what teachers and everyone develops as a portrait of an educator. So we're just beginning that process. It's exciting work. It's pretty cutting edge. Much of the research shows when you can have an appreciative, strength-based system of evaluation, you get a lot more creative and generative thought process from people, and a lot more movement, a lot higher functioning organizations. Sure, Carissa, question?
So I guess, can you, how does that look like? So if we have a teacher who needs improvement in a certain area, can you just give us an example of what that would look like to better understand it? Because it, it does seem like a foreign model, but it definitely seems like it works. I just am having a hard time wrapping my head around it.
Yeah, that, that model, what you're describing would be more our discipline venue or avenue, which is separate from evaluation anyway. So if a teacher needs improvement and they don't respond, they go on to a model that includes an improvement plan, a mentor. So there's actually a separate process, a discipline process that's outlined in the contract with dates, et cetera. So that process would still stay in place.
I guess I don't get it. So if you're evaluating something, something's going to be strength, and something's going to be relative weakness, correct? So what you're saying is evaluate the teachers on the strength, but what about how to, weakness doesn't mean that it's punitive. Weakness means that they need support. How are you addressing that if it's only a strength-based system?
Yeah, well, a strength-based system doesn't mean you don't look at people where they can grow. It just means you're coming at that from an asset and a strength-based approach. Doesn't mean people don't have areas of growth, but it's more of a reflective process for professional growth where you work in tandem. So a person doesn't go in with a simple checklist that says basic satisfactory based on a 40-minute, one-time observation. It's a lot more collaborative, that process. And I don't know where that'll end up, Carissa. That's part of this process of creating it and working with the teachers to get input. If on that, they say they're going to work on something and grow, and you're going in that process and it's not working, it would shift over to the other side, so to speak, which involves improvement plans and things like that, more the discipline piece of it. So it's two separate strands, just like our professional growth strand with our portfolios for research stands alone and different than our discipline process.
I guess I don't understand.
Esther, I would add one thing, I, because I hear what Chris is saying, kind of like when a student has a relative weakness, you find what their strengths are, and you teach into their strengths to get to their weakness. So an example, if a student's having trouble, you know, with reading, but they are really passionate about a certain topic, can you help them to become researchers and want to learn more? And teach through those strengths of being curious and interested, and they're interested, then work on something like fluency or something like that. So with a teacher, similar, finding their strengths, how do you use their strengths to teach into them to work on an area of weakness? I don't know if that helps.
That totally does help, because I guess what I was hearing a little bit was that we weren't going to, not, I don't see weakness as you need, as a bad thing. I see a weakness as something that you grow with. But you're, so you're addressing the weakness by rerouting it through the strain. You're not ignoring it. Completely makes sense. Thank you so much.
Along with that, Chris continues to do and head up a lot of work around D E I J. We're continuing to kind of bring that into a full framework. And each school, as we know, has their own committee, and we're also training at an SAU level with administrators and some teacher representatives from each building, so they can bring back that information. So that is up and running and gotten great feedback, some great facilitators and a lot of learning. So those things combined with budgets, budgets, budgets are what kind of are in the forefront right now, which leads me to our other piece related to financial. It's the SAFE funds, which stands for Supplemental Public School Response Fund. This is another pot of money that on, I think it was now November 6th, we got information that schools were going to get $220 per student influx into their current budgets to cover COVID-related costs, such as what Sarah, like you mentioned, P P Es. For us, it's a variety. We do have a spreadsheet started, and Kate very nicely and her team has filled that out. So STRATAM will be getting $106,600 and facilities-related costs, they have to incur between March 1st, 2020, and be done and in use by December 30th, 2020. So in other words, we can't pay for stuff that we're, that's not going to be in use and up and running by after December 30th. So we went back and I filled out a spreadsheet related to things like the ionization machines, all the P P E and cleaning supplies, any transportation costs from the summer E S Y program, the food carrier bags, cutlery and containers, some consulting that was related to special ed costs that were related to COVID needs. The Chromebooks, iPads, headsets and software that weren't in the budget. It can't have been in the budget, had to be above and beyond what you budgeted for. The cost of the Zoom licenses, the additional students that attended the summer programming that was due to COVID, not originally in I E Ps, people that, and professional development for staff related to remote learning. So that comes to a grand total of $129,206.05. So that's $22,606.05 over what the allotment is that we have received. So what we will do is, there's another opportunity that we just got the spreadsheet yesterday that has to be filled out by December 1st. Same rules apply. We have to be in use by December 30th with this, this money. You can apply for this money. This is competitive for any cost COVID-related again, that is over your allotment. So if you've used up your allotment and you've gone over, which we have by $22,606, $22,606.05. Friday, there's an information session from the state at 11:30. We, there then, Chris and I will sit in the room till those are done. So they're in by the first, anything that's over that allotment. So for STRATAM, it's going to be that $22,606.05. We'll fill out the paperwork and apply for that additional money that's the $10 million reserve fund. So there's two different pots of money. One, everybody gets that $200 per student. We have, we have the documentation. All we have to have for that is the documentation that what we spent that money on was stuff that was COVID-related, and we bought it and was in use between last March and the end of December, or the 30th of December. So we have documented that. We have, those are those things I listed. What goes above and beyond that in that same timeframe, I will apply, and I don't know if we'll get it or not. I imagine if there is more than $10 million applied for, they'll do some kind of equal ratio distributions, or somebody, everybody gets a little. If not, we might get the whole amount, because all of the monies that I'm putting in that are within the guidelines. So I just wanted to make the board aware, because we are getting the unanticipated revenue of the $200 per student, we do have to have a public hearing. And that's, that's our, an RSA, we don't have RSA 19820-B, appropriation for unanticipated funds made available during the year. Some of you may recall, five or six years ago, we got that Health Trust money, which we, it was unanticipated revenue, and we couldn't really spend it, quote-unquote, spend it. So the state has given us guidelines that if we have a public hearing, and then after that, the board says, you know, yep, sounds good, how you're spending the money, which will be the list I just presented, that will be presented for the public hearing. The public hearing will be closed, you'll start your meeting, and then where we can continue to be okay to buy those things I listed, because we've had the public hearing. We don't have a deliberative session. There's no warrant or anything like that. It's just we have to have a public hearing on what we're going to spend the funds on. So I've scheduled that, the, a conversation with Eric, to be at the beginning of our December meeting. So that'll happen regular time. I don't anticipate. It'll, it will take me about five minutes to go through it. And then if there's any public input, and then you'll close the public hearing, just like you normally do your public hearing and start the board meeting. So I'll post it that way, a public hearing. It does have to go in the paper at least seven days. Those have gone out to the papers to notify the public of the public hearing around these unanticipated funds. So for a first time ever, I think, we'll have two public hearings this, in one year. We don't normally have that. So once again, first time. So that's why we see postings for a public hearing. It's to go over how we're going to spend that money from the $200 per student that is unanticipated revenue during the school year. I'm sure you might have questions.
I do. So Cheryl. So the hearing, I'm sorry, we, hmm, the money we're getting back from the government, the state, is to cover expenses already incurred?
Yes.
Or the hearing is not really about spending money, right?
Hearing is to let the public know what we're spending the money on, and it's very strict guidelines to have to be COVID-related, and I will read that list at the public hearing, so people know. What it is, is technology, safety, any costs incurred that were incurred through COVID-related special education costs, or for example, the E S Y program that we expanded because of remote learning, things that weren't budgeted for. So in other words, when the board at the end of last year took the fund balance and bought some tech.
Right.
We can claim the tech that wasn't budgeted for this year, and that's about $40,000. So I can claim that, because we have those, and they're in use by December 30th. I can't order more tech now, because I wouldn't have that, and it wouldn't be in use by December 30th. So it, it gets complicated, because the federal government guideline says it has to be spent in use by 12:30, and whatever New Hampshire doesn't spend, they have to send back to the feds. So they're pushing all of this money out in November, which to be crystal clear, I did push back at the state, because I said, you know, you're giving us this, this money. We're not, it's not getting deposited till November 9th.
Yeah.
So you're giving us basically five weeks, if you look at the holidays, to spend a large amount of money. Luckily, we were forethinking and did do things like get tech and things like that, so I can go back and have those receipts and have that for the check that, that the state says they're going to check in the spring for the receipts, which we have. So.
It just seems odd, because we were planning to buy that stuff anyway, so it's kind of like ask, you know, sharing with the public.
We did buy.
How we were able to claim getting this money, but the money's already gone.
Well, well, the thing is, Cheryl, it still comes into our budget and we can spend it. So it's a shell game.
Okay.
So we're actually going to get an additional, what was it, $106,600 that we, in our budget. I have to show the state that we spent, quote-unquote, those funds on these. And we have the money between that timeframe, but the money still sits in our budget.
Okay.
Right? So our fund balance, it still helps us if we have something that comes up in the future.
Yeah.
Now have a healthier budget, because the money we. because the money we spent, we're getting essentially, we have to, you know, we're getting back the 106, 600, right?
Yep.
Money that you also, we could spend on.
Right. Things that we needed for this year to get this school year going. Yep.
So it's really, it really will help our current budget and we will be able to use that if other things come up or needs, et cetera.
Okay.
It's just not really the supplemental money. It's other monies in our budget because it frees up that money in our budget that we would have spent.
Right.
Basically.
Okay. I get it. Yeah, it's just a little strange, but yeah, I get it.
It's very strange. It's kind of complicated and I'm not sure why. It would have been helpful if the state had pushed this out, you know, in September, August. But they're now in a position where some funds didn't get spent. It's getting kicked back and other things they thought they have this huge amount of money because they got a billion dollars. So now they're pushing it out and they have to spend it by the December 30th. The state does, or they send it back to the feds. So now we have it by December 30th.
Okay. Well, we, we already did, so we're good.
We're in good shape because we did.
Okay. All right. I get it.
I just wanted, in case you hear that on the news or that we got this money, that's what all, that's how this all rolls out.
Yeah.
And you also might hear that schools haven't spent all their money in the CARES money. Those were the grants we originally got.
Right.
CARES money that we are all fully written and fully expended, so we're all good.
We're good on that. I remember. We were pretty fast on that. Okay.
So that's the SAFE funds and that's why you'll have a public hearing at the, before the meeting next month.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Awesome. That's it for me, Eric.
All right. Excellent. I was going to ask Sarah, but I guess it's one more section down, right? So I'll turn it over to Kate for the return to school update.
Esther, do we have screen sharing?
I can.
I can give it to you.
Thank you.
You should have it now, Kate. Yes?
Yep. Ah, not letting me. Let's see. Are you guys seeing my screen by any chance?
No, we're just seeing you.
Okay. Well, that's not fun, is it? Let's try again.
I have your screen on mine. Is it under Kate Lucas or Kate Blander?
I just checked off multiple participants.
Okay.
So it should be anyone.
I don't know why it's not letting me. It's telling me no. Oh, now it's working. Sorry, everybody. Guess I'm just a little bit delayed. So can you guys see that?
Yep.
So one of the things that we wanted to do was just break down some of the numbers and just to update you on our return to in-person. So currently we have 117 students participating remotely, which is about 25.5% of our student population. 181 students attend SMS on Blue Days and 165 students attend on White Days. And then below that is sort of the class breakdown. So in kindergarten, we have two teachers teaching in person and two teachers teaching remotely. In K1, they are both in person. In first grade, we have three teachers in person, one remote. In second grade, we have four in person, two remote. In third grade, the reason I'm just sort of elaborating on this is 2.5. We had some interesting numbers sort of fall out with our third grade in particular. We had thought originally we were going to have one third grade remote classroom and then there ended up being 24 students in the class. And that's a really large remote class, particularly for third grade. So we moved that to two teachers. But in doing that, we also had roughly about, I think there were 10 kids that didn't fit into the other classes. And so we actually have a permanent sub who's doing just one day. So she's working on Blue Days. So she has nine students, the same students on Blue Days and there just wasn't enough to fill the White Days. Her name is Michelle LaValle. She's a veteran educator. She's actually served as a classroom teacher and an administrator. She's doing a fantastic job. The kids adore her. So we're really excited about that. In fourth grade, we have three in person, one remote. And in fifth grade, we have three in person and one remote. So that what brings you to the total for our classes and our teachers. And then below that is preschool. There are seven sessions, two morning sessions, five afternoon sessions, and there's one remote session. Does have any questions about that? I can't see everybody's face, so you may have to speak up.
Kate, I guess I do have one question. This probably is covered by the attendance, or not the attendance, but the enrollment. But do we have a sense of how many people unenrolled? And was that mostly in K1 or was that all the way across the grades?
Sure. So we currently, I believe our numbers are, we have 40 students and Celine, it's either 40 or 30. I'm not sure. I think it's 40. I think we have 40 students that are homeschooling, but are still keeping their connection with SMS. So to be considered homeschool, it's 51% of the time outside of school and 49% of the time engaged in school. So we have a good percentage of kids or a number of kids that are coming for morning meetings and maybe related arts or coming for morning meetings, social emotional learning sessions and literacy. So we do have a, you know, I think it's 40 kids that are doing some sort of homeschool SMS combination, which brings us to about 540 kids. So if you think our numbers were, you know, 562 last year, that's about 22 students that no longer have a relationship with SMS. But I don't know the exact whether they moved to a different community, whether they're, went to private school. I don't have those exact numbers, Eric.
Okay. Thank you.
The vast majority of those students that are doing some sort of homeschool combination are the K1. There are some, there's a smattering throughout all of the grades, but the vast majority are in K1.
Kate. So the kids that are partial homeschool that are participating in related arts and things, are they, in the enrollment numbers that we received as an email, are they assigned a class and show up in the classroom numbers?
Yes. Yep. Some, well, some, some of them do. So Power School has some pretty clear like ways how they qualify for homeschool or not. So it really depends on exactly how, what level of commitment they're doing. And part of that for us is that if a student is connected to us, we're accountable for them. So really, we're accountable for their learning as well as their participation. So it really has to become, it's kind of like a tightrope walk of figuring out who stays on your books versus who's a full homeschool. And ultimately, and in reality, Erin, that has shuffled a lot this year. Lots of families have tried and it didn't work and so they changed their mind. Or when we returned in person, they tried and it didn't work. So our numbers are changing pretty frequently. And I think everybody's trying their very best to be flexible and, and also, you know, wanting to protect or preserve the classroom culture. So if you have a student that just appears once a week or once every, you know, once a day, maybe, it's really hard on the whole class too, because it's almost like a disruption when there's a new person every once in a while versus part of the culture who understands the previous learning. Because if a kid comes in and is asking, you know, all the questions from two days before because they weren't there, it becomes really hard. So we're really wanting to be as flexible and as accommodating for our families and our children, but we're trying to navigate those waters so the child isn't feeling like they come in and they don't know what's going on. So it's, it's a delicate balance right now.
Thank you.
Yep. So one of the other things we wanted to highlight, and I feel, you know, I'm proud of the work that the staff has done around this is, as we knew going into distance learning days, they were going to be really tricky because the classroom teachers are teaching all day with whichever part of their cohort they're with, which means they're really not available consistently to the students that are doing distance learning days. And we were really concerned about what that would mean for our kids without a strong connection to the staff at SMS on their distance learning days. But because of the partnerships that we were able to create with our ESPs, our tutors, our, you know, our special ed, our permanent substitutes, all of our children, even on their distance learning days, have check-ins with their classroom ESP or other staff members in the building. So what we've asked as a starting ground is that every classroom ESP gives 60 to 90 minutes of distance learning check-ins every day. So the classroom teachers with her, his, his or her children without the ESP for that 60 to 90 minutes, but that means the students that are distance learning have FaceTime with this, with an SMS staff person, even when they're on their distance learning days. And the feedback we're getting is that's, that's really helpful for our students that are now trying to navigate more, I don't want to call it unstructured because they're getting a really structured day. It's just not with a teacher facilitating as much. So I think it's been really helpful. And the partnerships between the ESPs and the classroom teachers has really enabled that to happen and keeps the continuity of learning, which is really a huge benefit to the system that we put in place for the kids. And I think it's, it's going to serve our kids really well. So and then in addition to that, of course, they're using Seesaw, Google Classroom. They have their related arts every day. And then they have a variety of tasks that they can access and participate in.
What are we hearing from parents?
I'm hearing really good, like really, really, really good feedback. I can't even, it's hard to, it's hard to even capture, Cheryl, the difference in our children. And I think this is a really interesting part of this is, I think if you'd asked children about school, they're like, yeah, I like school. But having taken, have it, having had it taken away from them has totally shifted their perception of the value of school, what school means to them in terms of their learning, their, their, their family, their extended family, their, their community. I mean, kids are really, as young as five and six and seven, all the way up through fifth grade, can really articulate the value of being back and what it means to them. And it's really shifted, shifted in the building. And I'm hearing a lot of that from our parents, which is really, really great. And honestly, I'm hearing less from parents now. I think we're settling in and I think the relationships between classroom teachers and parents is stronger. So they're really reaching out to administration far less than they were and really communicating much more directly with the classroom teachers, which is the goal. It should always be with the classroom teacher first. And I'm really seeing the reduction in reaching out to administration and really reaching out to classroom teachers, which is a good sign.
Is this week two or week three?
Week two. Today was day seven.
Okay.
Right? It feels like 796, but it's day seven. So one of the other things we think is really important is there had been lots of concerns about students falling behind. You know, there was going to be gaps. They didn't have the same structure in the, in the spring. You know, the fall was remote. But our fall, our fall data at SMS doesn't support that at all. So we did our Fanta's and Penel, which is our literacy benchmark. And it's important that I make this really clear. 90% of our students who were on grade level last winter when we took Fanta's and Penel remained on grade level, which means they made growth and progress. That's a huge statistic. I mean, that's a staggering percentage of our students. Those students that required intervention last winter are those students that require it now, which makes a ton of sense. Intervention is targeted, is specific. And obviously in the remote environment, it couldn't, it didn't unfold the way it would in the building. So we've, we obviously have our tier two and our tier three interventions already back up and running. Students are receiving those, some two days a week, some five days a week, depending on their needs. And additionally, Cindy Fitzgerald, who's our literacy specialist, has been doing a variety of trainings for our ESPs to support the kids in classroom in addition to their tiered intervention. So we're excited about that. Krista, did you have a question?
I'm question, I'm wondering if there were any assessments other than the iReady, which is purely in the app-based that were done, that you could show us regarding math? Because I know literacy, the children were pulled in and it's difficulty for accurate, accuracy to do everything on an app. Do you have anything?
So that we have the teachers doing their math assessments and their math interviews. Plus we have three math tutors that conduct math interviews, which is a, you're one-on-one with a child. You give them problems that they attack. You have conversations while they're doing it. So not only do they have to show you their thinking, they have to articulate their thinking. But that is only done with kids that are targeted. So either a teacher said, I'm concerned about their math thinking. I'd like you to do this with them. Or their iReady showed that they needed some sort of intervention. So that happens, it's sort of like the next tier. So for the vast majority of our students, the classroom is, the classroom teacher is getting it through their, their math work with the students, whether that's, you know, doing math together, whether that's a math discussion, whether that's a math worksheet, whatever that happens to be. But the kids that are, that we see like, oh, I need to know more about them. That's when we would do the math interview to give us more data about their mathematical thinking and understanding. But that's kid-specific, not whole school. It's targeted.
So we don't have any globalized, like standardized data for math?
The iReady is our, the iReady is the SAU-wide standardized math assessment.
Okay.
We were, we anticipated that it wouldn't be as stark as people were thinking, but this felt really, really good for us. This, I think this spoke, spoke volumes to the, to the learning that's been happening and the, and the support of the families for their children in order to keep their kids moving and making progress. So it felt really good to collect that information. The next thing on here is that we had been, as you know, doing the health screening forms by paper. And literally the Thursday before we opened, we were able to get pickup patrol up and running. We sent it to families, I think on Sunday. And we started on Monday and we have like 90% of our families already using it. And it is a game changer for everybody. It just, it's so when Kate and I and Nurse Lilly are outside at morning duty, there's, there's about 30 other people, but we're the three with our phones out. Anybody that shows up that may be getting a ride from somebody else's parent, I can pull up their name and see if their family completed the health survey. Any parent that's done it can just show me their phone and it's got a little green check that says, yep, the health survey has been completed. When we meet the buses, we know which kids are on the bus. So before we get on, even get on the bus, we check pickup patrol to make sure which kids have done it. And if there's any that haven't, we grab those kids right away and we can do that. We call their family. Nurse Lilly or Nurse Kristen does the temperature check and they're ready to go into school, really preventing any disruption or loss of academic time. So it's really been a huge part of making the process run smoothly. Although today we had 16 kids that didn't do anything, which is like a record-breaking number. So I don't know if we're all just so exhausted, we forgot. But it was our highest day of children not having their forms done.
Okay, that protocol, is that just checking temperature and then asking about different symptoms?
Yes. There's five questions and then the temperature check.
Because just as an anecdote, I had half COVID and never had a temperature the entire time. And that's been consistent with just about everyone I've spoken to is that no temperature started off with something that you wouldn't have anticipated being COVID-related. And that's what ends up getting you into it. So I just caution that we be careful that it's not an exact science on that screen. And that, especially the parents, they've got to be careful of those. You know, for us, it started with a headache and that's what everyone picked up off of was a headache.
So yeah, Eric, I think, I know that like there was one study where it was like a fever, was like a 15% indicator, like a very low percentage of an indicator. I think what SAU 16 done and Esther, you correct me wrong, we're aligning with New Hampshire's Department of Health and Human Service questions. And as they change their guidelines, we would adjust ours. But in order to sort of keep SAU 16 on the same page and really align with New Hampshire, we're using their guide, their questions for that, that survey or that screening. Yes, Erin?
Is it the same families that aren't completing the survey? Or is it just random people forgetting in the morning?
So we have a couple that are pretty, you know, habitual. And then we have, today was much more random. Like I was like, whoa, this is a first. And I think, I do think people are just exhausted and trying to get in the rhythm of, you know, blue and white days. I think it's just going to take a little bit, but it has been remarkably successful. We've been shocked at how smoothly it's run. Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? I'm sorry, I can only see a couple faces. So the next thing on here, I'm including COVID-19 numbers. And I want to caveat that this is just since the return to in-person because I think that that's a really important distinction because we're really talking about transmission and keeping schools safe. And I'll indicate that the numbers you're seeing do not reflect positive cases. I want to be really, really clear about that. And I can't break those numbers down for you on here. What this does is it talks about we're watching these 20 students, whether they came in close contact, whether their parents might have come in close contact with somebody, whether they're quarantining because they traveled, whether the kid came to school and had a runny nose and is just doing the 10 to 1 at home, the 10-1 rule, which is 10 days at home. Your symptoms are decreasing and no fever for 25, 24 hours. And then we have seven staff member that we have been doing the same thing since return to, return to in-person. So I just want to kind of give you a ballpark of the numbers we're working with at SMS. Because obviously everything you're seeing on the news is much more blown up than that. But really, at least at Stratum Memorial School, we're in really good shape.
All right, Krista?
How's Nurse Lilly's case though? Is she finding that a lot of kids are coming to school with cold-like symptoms? Or is everyone kind of staying home and how is that going?
Parents are being incredibly precautious.
Good.
Incredibly, incredibly, we're very, I don't even know that we've even had to send people home since CCC. So in the CCC, the first couple of weeks, we were sending a lot of kids home. We were all adjusting. Parents didn't know. It was kind of just, you know, feeling it out. But we've, she, it's been, parents have been incredible. I mean, they call, they email, I mean, they ask questions. They're not afraid to put it out there. They're really being incredibly thoughtful, I feel like.
Good, good.
Yep. Just because you brought Nurse Lilly up, Chris, I just want to address that and I was going to address it at the end of this. I don't know that there's a way for us to thank Nurse Lilly enough. Her commitment to SMS since the summer, I mean, always, I don't want to say that she always hasn't been committed, but she's literally working. twenty-four, seven, all the time. I mean, she's on the phone with me sometimes at nine and ten o'clock at night. She's on the phone with me on Saturday and Sunday. She's shooting e-mails to me on, I mean, she's coming in early, staying late. She could not be doing more for SMS and the Stratum community. And she's being like jolly about it. Like she, I think she feels good because she can give back to the community, and she's being really positive influence. And in addition to our children and our families, she's really done a nice job of educating our staff. She ran after-school sessions for staff to sign up and go ask any question that they had, or to come see her about proper procedures or protocols. She's really gone above and beyond for the entire SMS community. So I just think it's super important to recognize her efforts to keep us safe and healthy and in school.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah. There's just no way to describe what she's done for us. I'm sure she's going, Kate, if I have to tell you the same thing one more time, because I think I asked seven hundred times. I'm like, can we go over this one more time? I want to make sure I'm telling the parent the right thing. She's just been great. So we sent out a holiday travel survey to our staff about three weeks ago, just saying, you know, in order to best prepare for our students and for our staff, are you planning to travel outside of New England for Thanksgiving? Are you planning to travel outside of New England for December break? Currently, we have one staff member traveling outside of New England over Thanksgiving, and two over December break. And both of the ones for December break said, potentially. We were supposed to, we're not sure we're going to. And then for our families, we sent the survey out to our families. We have about a third of our families that have responded, which is a really small number for us. Typically, we get a lot of response from families, but this is a small number. I'm wondering is if, because they just don't know yet. They haven't really decided. But what we currently have is two families that are traveling outside of New England for Thanksgiving, and two, they're traveling outside of New England for, during the December break, which is staggeringly low numbers. I mean, again, Chris goes back to your point, like, how are families handling this? They're being really, I feel like, responsive. And, and I think that the, the call to be in-person, they're going to do as much as they can to make it, you know, possible for us.
It's really good.
Yeah, it's awesome. So then, the last three things on here, I just feel like it's really important to highlight. I think it's obvious, all the work the educators in the building are doing. I don't think there's really any way to, to look at what they're doing and not applaud their efforts and their commitment and dedication. But there are three things that I wanted to really highlight today. The first is the relationships between our classroom teachers and their ESPs, or our case managers and the ESPs that are supporting the case managers, or our ESPs that are supporting the Zen Den and supporting kids across all different classrooms. The, the commitment, these partnerships, and the, the learning that they're doing together, the constant communication that they're putting in, the time before school and after school to be on the same page, is outstanding. And it's speaking to why I think we're finding so much success right now, because they're truly, they are looking at each other's equals and making decisions together in the best interest of our children. And it's really made a huge difference for us. And it's also why I think we'll be able to stay open. So for example, if, I'm just going to use a random teacher. So if Melissa Mastin had to quarantine for whatever reason, her classroom ESP can run the classroom with those children, Melissa can zoom in from home, and they've got their two teachers right there, and they're on the same page, they're working on the same culture, they have the same expectations, they know what the children need, because they're having these conversations about, you know, personalizing their education. It really is a testament to the work that needs to take place in order for us to do a good job. And they're really doing an outstanding job. So that's number one. Love it. So, super excited. Love the model. I love what we're doing with it. I'm super proud of everybody. I hate that word. I'm super impressed with everybody. I want to skip down to making the most of the outdoors, and I'll go back to school counseling. So one of the things that we recognize is that the more we can use our outdoor space, the better, right? Get kids outside, they can run around, it's fresh air. It is engaging, it is keeping kids healthy, it is getting their wiggles out by not bumping into other children. It's all these amazing things. And Lindsay Geddes, one of our first grade teachers, actually built with her students an outdoor classroom. And they go out every day. They do their reading out there, they do their science and inquiry out there, they can do some of their math. They would argue that their writing is a little bit harder because the surfaces are hard, and first graders don't exactly have the best fine motor yet. So she would, you know, there's, but the kids would tell you that. And last week, I got to have the privilege of going out with her and her students, and we were out there for probably, I don't know, forty-five minutes. We didn't have to talk to a kid one time unless they wanted to celebrate something with us. They all had jobs, they knew what they were doing, they supported each other, they helped out, they talked about how they were turning their outdoor classroom into something similar to a school. I mean, it was spectacular to watch six-year-olds in their first week of school owning their outdoor classroom. So, so it was just awesome to see, and the kids are really invested. Steve Gagnon, who's our maker space, maker space teacher, has been taking, partnering with teachers and taking classes out to our challenge course, because you can socially distance on our challenge course. There's lots of different things that require one or two people, or lots of space. And he's trained in the safety precautions and how to use it. So he's been partnering with teachers and taking classes out there. We have classes going to Stratum Hill Park regularly, using the trails, studying ecosystems, you know, really kind of capitalizing on some deep learning while using the outdoors. Our playground zones have been fantastic. They're really spread out, the kids are utilizing them. And then the last piece is, we were able to adjust a little bit with our PE program because of our classroom ESPs. So those students that have PE on days in or in the building are actually going outside for PE. And so Tiffany Locke is the PE teacher that's in the building. She's taking the class outside with the ESP and using the zones on the playground. And those that are remote are doing remote with Mrs. Bachelder. So it really has been, like I said, a collaborative effort, but we're really trying to capitalize on the gorgeous grounds that we have to get kids outside and, and learning. And then the final thing I wanted to talk about is the remarkable school counseling program that is taking place this year. It is, there's so much to celebrate with what's going on. There's, so Jessie Caldwell is a new member of that team. She used to be a teacher at SMS. And her, the collaborative efforts with her and Tiffany and Diane and Colleen Denzil, who was our BCBA, and a number, and Nancy Downing in the Zen Den, it is unbelievable the things that are happening. And really, just their brainstorms. I mean, there's, there hasn't been admin reaching out and saying, hey, can you do this? It has literally been this beautiful brainstorming. Jessie started doing morning hikes with our kids, and afternoon hikes. So kids would sign up, and she would take them out on the trails. In addition to that, Jessie did a whole new Counseling Corner website for, specifically for SMS school counseling. It's got resources for teachers, parents, kids. It's amazing. And, and it's just, it's like, great to visit the site. It feels good to visit the site. It's a bunch of resources. Jessie had gone to Plymouth on a college visit. And I don't know if you've been to Plymouth State, but they have like banners with like words that represent their school and make you feel welcoming and part of the community. So Jessie and Caitlin Dow have partnered, and they're partnering with the students to create those for outside of our buildings. So we have our own, like, SMS, the things that matter to us that can make kids feel welcoming, and like, it's part of a community. And then the fourth thing on here is eco-wellness. So there's a huge body of research about how nature is healing, and truly supports students in their co-regulation skills, in their healing, in their anxiety, in their observation, in their wellness, in their mindfulness. And so Jessie has partnered, I think, right now, I want to say it's something like eleven different teachers. And they're doing eco-wellness in partnership together with their children. So to say the school counseling program is shining is an understatement. It's really cool, the things that they are trying this year to support our kids and ground our kids so that they can be successful, you know, both social, emotionally, and academically.
Great. That's a big jump forward.
It's really cool. It's really, it's, I, it's fun when they come in, or they have their weekly meeting, and they come in and they want to share their ideas. And I'm like, yep, run, run with it. Go, go, do it, do it. It's, I mean, it's just exciting that, it's just cool to watch them finding so much purpose in the work. So, that was my update on the return to in-person.
Kate, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What are some things that have been challenging that you're continuing to work on and, and move forward with that hasn't been so great that, that we could help, or just in general, that you're improving in the future?
Sure. So I have a couple things that are coming to mind for me right now. The first, I would say, is just fatigue. So, Chris, I think what we're encountering right now is people are exhausted. And, so I don't want to call it a morale issue, because I really feel like the teachers are really happy to have the kids back, and it feels really bucket-filling to spend our days with the kids. But there's a level of exhaustion that I don't think I've seen on, on educators' face ever, quite what I'm seeing on a daily basis. And I do worry about the, the burnout around that, right? So I think that that's something we're going to have to sort of pay really close attention to and monitor, and figure out ways to support them. And I think we're trying to do that. I just don't know that we have all the answers for that yet. So that's something that I think we need to be, you know, cognizant of. I guess, you know, some other stuff I think is, teachers are working really hard to figure out, how do we, I don't know how to say this. So, I'm the, I'm a firm believer in children learn best when they're engaged and invested and excited. They're willing to take the risks. But there's also this balance that we have to find right now, more than any other time that I can remember, where really building those foundational skills is essential. And so often, you hook kids by giving them choice and having voice and getting them excited to then push them academically. But we have a time issue right now. And so, we're constantly trying to figure out right now, how much can I truly tap into what's exciting for them, what's high interest, but also really ground them in some foundational skills? Because the, what we worry about is, if we don't build that strong foundation now, there's going to be this lack of confidence, a lack of investment, and then a lack of engagement that will have, you know, consequences for the foreseeable future. At the same time, we don't want to bring kids back for the first time in eight months and be like, sorry, now we got to write down the foundational skills. So it's finding that balance, and at the same time, keeping our teachers inspired to do that and do it well. Because this, one of the strengths of Stratum is the teachers really do out-of-the-box, progressive thinking. They really do try to create empowered students. And right now, it's finding that balance. And so I, I feel like that's a conversation we're continuing to have a lot, and we're going to have to continue to have a lot. So ultimately, those things are pretty tied together, because I think it's just teachers wanting to do the very best for the students, and not always knowing, you know, how they're going to do that. I think they know what it is, but the path getting there right now is, we have to tease that out as we go.
Thank you.
And then you have Ashley Healy, who adopted a cow. So that class is now officially adopting a cow that's going to be born in like a week, and they're following it, and we're working on inquiry questions as we speak.
That's great.
You say that. We had brisket for dinner, and my daughter happens to be in Ashley Healy's class.
Okay, you know.
We were eating her cow.
See?
I said, thank you, Mrs. Healy.
So it's, I mean, I don't want to sound like a Debbie Downer, and I hate that that's how that felt. I do just want to honor the exhaustion and the, the efforts that, that everybody is putting in to make this work, and that there are consequences to that on the, the energy and the morale of people when they're just that exhausted. That's all.
And I think it's important for us and the communities to be aware of that, because I can't imagine, I mean, the work that they're putting forth, at least in my, my home, is unbelievable, unbelievable. So, anything that we could do to support them, I think that we would, as a board, obviously.
Thank you. I think they feel supported. I do. I think they know, they're not in it alone. I think they know that this is a giant team effort to get this done well.
Sarah, did that answer most of the questions that you had?
Apparently, my name is Grace tonight. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of questions from families that did ask questions from our last meeting. One particularly around, how long is the decision binding? And the answer was March. But I know I've had some families follow up with me and ask, well, what is March? Beginning of March, middle March, end of March? So maybe if we have some clarity around that timeline about that binding period, that would be super helpful. And then I think I just had two more.
So I think what we had thought was the beginning of March, Sarah. And I think what we had figured is that we're really kind of going to start, I mean, we're looking at data all the time, but really start looking in January, once we get back from the holidays, about what's working, what's not, what potential guidelines have changed. Sort of using that month of February to review all of that, is then anything updated, making decisions, potentially at the very beginning of March, or even letting families know before we go into February vacation, what they're thinking. So I'm not thinking end of March, but we didn't want to set an exact date, because we just are so uncertain on so many variables, that it felt like we wanted to give us, like, beginning of March, but it could be letting parents know by, you know, the third week of February. I'm not really sure, but I'm not thinking end of March. And I don't, I think Esther, that's what we've talked about across the SAU, correct? Okay.
Okay, thank you. This was an awesome question that stumped us, around the SMS snow day. Will remote students still have a snow day? Did we ever find an answer to that? That was such a good question.
I'm going to snow.
What?
It's not going to snow.
Oh, it's probably twenty, buddy. It's going to snow bucket.
So we are talking about that. We're actually talking about it both at the building level and the SAU level. We talked about it at our principals' meeting last Thursday, which is principals across the SAU. And then what we agreed to do is go back to our buildings and talk at the building level about, like, what could that look like? What is it? What is the, so for, I'll speak for myself, and this may not be the popular answer, which is like my life story. So the immediate response for most principals is like, we don't have snow days, there's no need for a snow day. And I get that. I do understand that. Like, yep, we, we know we can go remote, it's really easy. I also believe there's something really special for children in New England to have a snow day. And so, I'm trying to find, like, what's it, for me, that's me, and I know I can't speak for everybody else. And I also know that learning time is valuable right now. So every day counts. So I don't want to trivialize the important work that we do in a learning day. I believe there's probably a middle-of-the-road way where there's like, maybe it's where there's three times where you check in and you get some intense learning, but then you get to go play in the snow. I don't have an answer for it. And I know we're working it at the building level, and then we're coming back in a week to talk about it at the principals' meeting again. And then we'll have a more firm answer based on the collective, the collective need. So I don't yet have an answer, I have a wish.
Okay. I like your, I like your wish.
Part of the specialness of the snow day is getting to sleep in a little.
For a fam, I'll speak for myself. There's something about, like, I just got a day I didn't know I was going to get. Like, my life is so busy. I don't have a five-day workweek. I work seven days a week. And when I get a snow day, it's an unexpected, like, day to, like, love my kids who are sixteen and nineteen, which doesn't, you don't hear moms saying that very often. Like, I, for me, that's a treasure. And so I know that's my personal bias. So I'm trying to find, like, where's the middle ground, which I'm not worried about.
I also think it's important, like you said, for the teachers, they want to be home with their kids and watch their kids in the snow, too. So, I mean, I hope that as you're talking, like, we're keeping that in mind, because they deserve that as much as anybody else does.
Yep, hundred percent.
And heck, we can go all the way to the end, too.
Speak for yourself, Cheryl.
I'm not, I'm like Eric, I'm not a big fan of summer vacation.
Hold on, no, I wouldn't go that far. I love summer vacation.
Nine weeks of it. Yeah. I'm not a big fan of summer vacation. But anyway.
I don't get, I don't know what we're talking about. I, I get to work while they go, all have fun.
So, can I ask a question? Did you have another one? Sarah, are you good?
I have, yep.
Okay. You, you talked a lot about the in-person.
Wait a minute, I think Sarah has a question.
No, I'm sorry. You said, no, you're done.
It's working. I said, I have a question.
I'm sorry, I thought you said you're done. I apologize.
Never, it's never done. I just have, there was a question around random COVID testing, and the answer was, our numbers are very low right now. That was the response. Our numbers are four point three in the community right now. So our numbers are not low. The answer's still the same.
So Esther, I think I'm going to jump in, but I think it was because the, there were a couple of things. The, there wasn't access to the same number of tests that we had hoped that there was going to be for random testing, right, Esther? I think the problem was, there wasn't.
We were talking about rapid testing. I don't know about, rapid testing would be random sample.
Right.
Wondering if that's what the question was referring to. Right now, the capacity, last time that we had this conversation with Dr. Johnson and other healthcare providers, was that they could do ten students a day in the entire SAU.
Right.
So that wasn't really serving the purpose that we hoped for. We have a meeting tomorrow with Dr. Johnson at nine o'clock. So that's on the list, testing. So I might have a better answer as I get updated information tomorrow.
And maybe what that meant, numbers are very low right now, meaning that the testing capacity, the test, the access to testing is low.
Right. As far as the, the lab being able to handle the amount of tests they can process, that was the issue. But again, that was a while ago. That was before our numbers were increasing. And when I say our numbers, I mean, as a state and community, not in our schools. Our school numbers are still very low, as Kate indicated on her report. So it's kind of two separate things. And when you think about that matrix that went out, that had, what is your school like? What is the community like? So we're going to talk about that again tomorrow with the healthcare providers.
Thanks. Last thing, Cheryl, sorry. I, I know that you surveyed families and teachers around their travel plans for Thanksgiving and the winter break, and the response from families was low. Do you have thoughts of sending? Do you have thoughts of sending it out one more time? Or do you think that people are feeling like this is my, like this is private, I'm not sharing and that's why I'm not responding?
So I, I've been, it went out in the weekly newsletter last week. I will remind people again to please fill it out. I'm not, I mean, I'm keeping it to myself. I'm not sharing it with anybody else. It's just literally for planning purposes. I think one of our biggest concerns was, you know, if a teacher had seven kids in their, in their class that were going to be traveling, then did we want to talk about whether that should be remote when we get back? I think that that's really the only purpose. I am, I am certain there are some families that don't want to give me that information. I'm, I'm, there's no question in my mind. But I also know families are super busy right now. And so simple things like replying to a survey is something they just don't have time for right now. So I will remind them again on Friday, just to please, if they have a minute to fill out the survey.
Okay, that's it. Thank you so much.
I have a question. You, you talked a lot about, you know, going back to in-person. What about, is there anything to report on the kids who have stayed remote?
Oh yeah, I'm so glad you asked, Cheryl. It's going really, really well. We've heard the first week, so on Friday mornings, Kate Blander and I meet with the remote teachers and the remote ESPs, just to have a, like a check in with that smaller group. And last Friday, they were in this sort of getting to know their new group of kids, because a lot of them had new students. And so for example, we use Kitri Schaefer, who's the fifth grade teacher. She has 21 students and she has 13 new students and she had eight of her from previous. So it was like basically getting a whole new group of kids. And so really it was working out the kinks with that group and getting to know them. And she was talking about trying to personalize some of their math learning. And she's like, I had to do math assessments because I needed to know how they, how they did it. They were brand new to her. But then I had my vertical team staff meeting this morning and she's like, it's like a whole new week. She's like, I can't believe how quickly we were able to settle into our new culture and our new rhythm and communication with families has been really great. Sarah Donlin, who's the first grade remote teacher, sends out a really detailed, specific email to all of her families about exactly what they're learning in each of the different disciplines, on the activities. She gives a rationale for the type of learning. So I'm finding the communication is going really well. The kids are feeling good and the SCL sessions have started to pick up. So they're going to continue to do SCL sessions in person, once a week or once every other week, depending on the classroom. So that's really nice as well. All the other things, Cheryl, those teachers also do pick up once a week. So if you were to walk up to SMS on any given day, there'll be a bucket out front that might say Kitri Schaefer, fifth grade. And there's a bunch of materials for every single kid. So we're constantly getting new materials in the hands of our students.
Oh, that's great.
Sarah or Cheryl, any, any further questions or?
No, I'm good. Anybody else? I'm good.
So no, I'll move on to the fiscal year 22 budget presentation.
All right. That's me again. Come on, you guys. This is a lot of meetings in a row where I've been doing a lot of talking.
Sorry for that.
Come on, Eric. It's all your. All right. So let's see. So this is the proposed budget for fiscal year 22. You'll notice, I think you all have this. Is that correct? I shouldn't make that assumption. I believe you have. Okay. So if you go to the final page, you will notice that the, it is a 3% increase over fiscal year 21. It's actually 2.92 operating budget, general fund. And then when you include food, it's at 3, 3.00%. So that's on page nine of nine. A couple of things that I think are important factors for us to note, just in general about this, is that the New Hampshire retirement went up significantly for next year, for fifth, first fiscal year 22. And I know Michelle is on there, but Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong. I think when we ran the numbers just on that alone, it was like a 1.9% increase on our budget just by that figure. Is that, does that sound right to you?
Sounds a little high. Let me, let me work it out and I'll get back to you guys.
Okay. So maybe that was a preliminary number when we were having the first conversations, but we were like, oh, okay. So that's the whole increase. But maybe, maybe it was a bit lower when we did the final numbers. Hopefully that would be great. So Eric, would you like me just to start on page one and just review anything that seems significantly different than the previous year?
Yeah, I think I would start. I mean, I don't want to go. My personal take is I don't want to go line by line. I would defer to you as to the areas that you want to talk to first. And then with this being sort of our first review, we may have a couple of questions for you. But I would anticipate we'll have more questions. You know, when, when we meet again, or we, you know, we may have some of them in between and get them answered individually.
Okay. So the first thing I would just call out then would be on the first page. If you look over the fourth line down, which is salaries of temporary employees. And you'll notice there's just a little bit of a jump there. Part of that is when we have maternity leave or someone that's out for an extended amount of time, your permanent subs fill in for that position. But once they've been doing that position for 20 days, they move to the teacher's contract. So you have to, there is a difference in their salary when they're just a permanent sub or when they're then become a long-term sub. So we just want to sort of delineate that for you guys to recognize that. The other big change on the first page is under professional services for curriculum development. I have been working with Esther and Heather, who's our grant writer, and I've been talking to the DOE. And I'm feeling like we can better capitalize on our grant funds to support some of that curriculum funding. And in effort to keep our budget line, you know, our budget fiscally responsible, I'm really going to be capitalizing on those grant funds rather than having to build it into the operating budget. So you'll have noticed there's a a bit of a savings there as well and potentially even more. But this felt like a safe place to start while we're working through that, particularly with some of the unknowns that we're going to be facing over the next, you know, year or so. Does anybody have any questions from, I'm sorry, from page one that they wanted me to address?
Can I ask on that? How is that? I'm curious how, how to read this year if, if we're going to capitalize on grants. So the fiscal year 20 actuals is only about $4,600. Am I reading that right? Am I in the wrong line?
So no, that was last year. Yep. And then this year we had, I'm sorry.
And then you're seeing 16, four, oh, I'm sorry, the current year we're in. Okay. Okey dokey. Now I got to read across. New budget total for 21, 22. You're seeing that coming down.
Correct.
And that's what you mean is that, that will be due to grants.
Correct. We're going to use the grant, you can use some, you can use particularly when it comes to title two and title four. You can use those for curriculum materials and professional development. And so we'll be using them that way.
Okay.
Okay, I'm looking at the wrong column. So then on page two.
Quick question.
You see Carissa? She has her hand up.
I can't see anybody. Sorry.
Sorry. For books and other printed media, it's reduced. Why is it being reduced?
So we're finding in particular now that one of the things that we've learned through the COVID is a lot of the resources we need don't necessarily have to be print source anymore, Carissa. And we're really learning to better utilize some of the software that's available to us. So we felt like this was a place we didn't need quite the same amount of money now that we've really learning. And these are, what felt good about this is through our conversations, these are resources that we would want to use whether we were remote or in-person.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So then on page two, the one that I have sort of just. Am I on the wrong? This is, sorry, this is a little bit different than my, I apologize you guys. So the bottom of page one, I apologize for that. If you look under ESY salaries, you'll notice a bit of a jump there. Part of this actually goes to what Esther was talking about at the beginning of this with the, the safe funds. Given the, the desire on the part of SFS administration to support our students over ESY. This, this summer, for example, typically ESY is four weeks. We made it six weeks. Students that may have only been coming in for a half hour, three days a week, might've been coming in for 40 minutes, 45 minutes, five days a week. So we spent a considerable bit more money this summer on ESY and in anticipation of the possibilities of what this year may look like. We wanted to make sure we had enough money in there to support a robust ESY for next summer as well. So you saw that number under 12, 10, 501, 12. There's an increase and that's why.
What does ESY stand for? Down there for Doc.
Extended school year.
Thank you.
Yep. So then the other part under special education, which is 12, 10, you'll notice a reduction in line 12, 10, 505, 63. And that's again, based on number of students. And that is tuition to outside schools. The, I'm sorry, Cheryl.
That's a big change.
Yes. The next item on here, if you were to look at the very bottom of page two, so social work. When we, when you guys agreed to hire a social worker, my first year here, we hired the social worker at 60%. This year she is at 80% and our plan has to been to make her full-time gradually. And so next year she'll be 1.0 FTE instead of point eight.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
We have Jesse Caldwell. Is, is there overlapping? Do we still need that social worker to be full-time with Jesse Caldwell in place? Or we do need that? Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yeah. So Jesse Caldwell, when we think of school counseling, you think of tier one, Jesse Caldwell, Diane Griffith are tier one. That's their position. So they do all students coping skills, social emotional learning, think that's their nature there. When it, when it allows, they can do some small group, which we love to do. Like maybe we have a small group of students with divorced parents. Maybe we have a small group of students who struggle with competition on the playground and they can facilitate those. But truly a social worker is tier two, tier three, really specialized, individualized services. And often with your tier ones, your school counselors, it's short term. So they would do a, a small group for six weeks, once a week. Whereas your social worker is meeting one-on-one and sometimes it's for a year. Sometimes it's for a year and a half. So it really is the difference between counseling and therapeutic services, which are very, very different clinical services. So it's a very different level of engagement, service and training that you would provide for students for different reasons. And ultimately, we had, we had another counselor before. Jesse is into a new position. She just filled in a different position. I mean, filled in for someone that retired.
And I would just add, Kate, that social work does a lot of work with families too. So sometimes the rapper on the whole family for connecting with outside supports, just a different level of work that our community does require. And I know her, her caseload is full of, of supporting the whole family, not just the students we have at SMS.
And who's our social worker?
Tiffany Green.
Any other questions on page two? So on page three at the top, where you look under guidance services, you'll see quite a bit of a jump there. But I actually want to point out to you that that's actually already happening this year. What had happened when we hire new staff, we look and we budget for, I think last year we budgeted for master's step three. Is that right, Michelle, at the end of the year, Esther? So what we do when we're looking at new staff is whatever that dollar figure is based on the positions we have to fill, we have to equal it or come under it. But how you do it doesn't mean you have to hire everybody at master's step three. It means it needs a combination of those things. And guidance is one of the areas that was someone that's higher up on the scale and we just offset it by someone that was brand new to teaching so that it averages out there versus just everybody being at the same place. So that's happening this year. It just is, looks different because of the way it works out budgeting wise. And then is there anything else on that? Sorry, these pages don't align with my printed out copy. So I apologize to everybody.
Well, the, and it's in the psychological services.
Yes, absolutely. So we currently have a school psychologist that works point five. So for, so two and a half days or 50% of the time, 5, 0.5 FTE. And it is, it only does evaluations at this time. The school psychologist doesn't do the other part of the job, which is working with children and supporting teachers in the classroom or building capacity that way. And it, it's our position that we need a comprehensive system and that includes a social worker, a BCBA, school counselors and a full-time school psychologist that does both the evaluations, but also then the implementation of some of the plans. And so it's our position to take that point five position and make it a hold next year.
So are we adding a new person? Are we extending? I don't know if we can talk about that in public. Are we extending one person's time in our school? I mean, is that new personnel? How's that working?
We can't talk about individual issues. We can talk about the increase to the position to a full-time, but not specifics. Does that make sense? Because we're identifying a person.
Yeah, no, I understand. I knew it was precarious and I asked it. So let me ask the school psychologists. If, so we have the full-time BCBA, what kind of services do you plan that the psychologist will be implementing?
Well, school psychologists do a whole variety of things. I think right now, as I mentioned, they're just doing the evaluations, which obviously is super, super important and a big part of the work. But the second part of that work is how am I then partnering with a classroom teacher based on the results of the students' evaluations to ensure these things are happening in the classroom? Or how am I working with these students that have come up through this process that might need these additional services? When you think about a psychologist, it is sort of those extension of, and when I think school psychology, I think more about just not just the social emotional part of behavioral habits, the academic habits, those sorts of things. And that would be the role that this person would fill, the full scope of a, of a school psychologist.
So I guess I'm just, I'm questioning the need of that because we have such a strong, we have the counselor, we have the social worker, we have the assessment of the psychologist and the, which gears the educators as well as the BCBA's as to what they need. Is that something? I don't really understand. I mean, if, I guess I don't understand why we're putting another service in that arena and maybe not adding to another field.
I would assume, I mean, a school psychologist is doing most of the evaluations for identified students. So
Absolutely. And he is doing the evaluations, but what, so I don't understand the service part because we have such, we have, we just moved to the full BCBA and we have all the, the other.
But they can do, they can do psych evals.
He's doing the psych evals. He's doing, we're talking about this other 50% of what he's doing will be services. What will those services be that the other staff can't do? Neuropsych evals are doing like many, I mean, I, I'm pointed what they're doing. I just don't understand why we need him to implement services that are not, are unique to what.
So I think that, so if I, when I try to think about this as a whole program and I think about 550 kids and I think about what we're seeing as an increase of the number of students that require intensive services, both at the tiered level and at the special ed level, we don't have an adequate service, we don't have an adequate number of people to service the kids in the way that our children deserve. I think we've done a really nice job when we think about, we have three math tutors, we have three literacy tutors, we have, you know, case managers. Well, there's a whole nother component to children outside of their academic needs that I think we can do a better job servicing. And when I think about SMS, I think this is really our second year of even implementing tier one social emotional services. So Jesse and Diane are swallowed up in that. And now we really need to be able to offer the tier two and tier three before a student becomes special ed with regards to the same level of service for something other than academics. And my feeling is your BCBA, your school psych and your social worker sort of add in that tiered intervention so that we prevent students from having to be identified and needing, you know, an IEP. And then additionally, how do we build those capacity with our, with other people in the building, meaning classroom teachers and to offer those as well, or to be the extension over the arms, over the branches of those other positions.
And just to add on, Kate, a way that I see it is that school psychologist focuses primarily in the academic areas while they can support the mental health and the whole child. They do a lot of the academic supports that are required for students that are specialized education or even just tier one. And coaching teachers to maximize student progress in the academic world where BCBA's may focus more on behavior intervention and that kind of route. So kind of those two working in tandem will be really beneficial for our students that often swing between the two. So I see that, that work being necessary and something we aren't providing our teachers or students with right now because of the time limits and him just providing the evaluation work.
And I think you have the DESSA. We're administering the DESSA with our first grade, our second grade and our fourth grade. And we're getting these kids that are showing that they need additional services, that there's concerns for their, their academic, their, their social emotional, their, I mean, all those things. And if we don't have the people to provide it, we're getting data and then what are we doing with it? We've got to be able to address it if we're actually assessing that the students need something.
So I guess, I mean, can you give me an example of the services? So I understand the fruit of their assessment. I, I'm not wrapping my head around what they can provide within services. So for the past two years, we have been providing services regarding social emotional. What are the services that they're providing towards academics beyond their assessment skills that the kids are not getting in that we're seeing a gap in?
So an example would be, I've seen school psychologists, so they've done the evaluation. So an example would be, I've seen school psychologists, so they've done the evaluations, the student goes in and they're going to be working on some regulation skills. Or they're going to be working on, I'm trying to think what the most recently it was. What, how are we responding in moments of frustration? And they're building strategies and skills and they're using voice boards or visuals. Or we have a kid in crisis, which we have kids in crisis, and they're the one meeting with the child and de-escalating the child and then working on building the skills and how are we going to respond differently next time? It's really a combination of, it kind of pulls together, really, it pulls together your BC. They do a little BCBA, they do a little bit case manager, they do a little bit social worker, but they pull it together because they have a depth, I mean, they have a depth of understanding of the brain that, you know, exceeds most of the rest of us in this profession, especially when it comes to the neuropsych.
So everything that you told me though, that it seems like, so we're adding staff for the social, emotional component and we have incredible, incredible staff now. So we're going to keep on adding it, but I don't see, like, what about, we talked before about adding a math specialist or things. It seems like all these people we're adding are one-sided. What about, I mean, we have the full-time social worker who, we have the guidance counselor, we have the full-time BCBA, and all of them are trans-disciplinary teams. They're, all of their curriculum and what they work on overlap. So I just don't get why we're not adding something in another arena.
Something, Karissa, that I think is important too, though, to think about is that the school psychologist can really support a teacher who has a student who has special needs. That student has an IEP, right? They have their individual goals that usually case manager's working on or something like that. But what would be super beneficial is if the school psychologist can push in, who has a strong understanding of how neurodiverse that student is and can coach the teacher on how to meet that student's needs all day long, not just when they're pulled out receiving those services. And that's something that we're lacking right now. Be really nice to close those two silos of special ed and regular and really blend together all of our kids. I feel like that's a huge perk and something that our teachers are asking for. This full-time school psychologist would have time to then go do, right? Because that creates capacity, now that teacher can meet all of these needs in just a different way. So I just think that's an additional, you know, way to consider a full-time school psych, supporting tier-one.
In terms of neurodiversity, OTs, PTs, speech, which we just added another full-time, are all well-versed in neurodiversity as well as BCBA's. They're all neurologically-based positions. So like I said, and I don't mean to be a jerk about this, I just don't understand why, like.
So, so, no, I don't think you're being, I think you're.
Have staff, why are we, I mean, I just feel like we mentioned, again, I go back to that math specialist and other areas and we're just, we keep on coming back to this one area. And I, I think we should continue to progress, but not neglect the other areas. And it just, I don't see the other areas developing like this.
Kate, can I just add another data point to the conversation? The issue, part of the issue is, Karissa, for as long as I've been working with STRATAM, I always have to pay for additional testing that goes above and beyond. So what happens is our current school psychologists can't do all the testing at the .5 position. So then I have to pay per diem to either pull someone from the outside in to complete the testing or add time onto our current one. So I don't think it's a 50/50 split. And Kate, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do know that the limited time I've worked with STRATAM, I have, we have had to call in outside services even to meet just the testing needs of students in our building. So based on that information that I have, right, I'm guessing it's, it's probably closer to about 60 or 70% of the job is testing and then about 30 to 40%, depending, is taking that testing and then working through that with the full team, the academic side, the BCBA of how they're going to implement a behavior plan, if that's as necessary, then the special ed service of a speech and language. So that school psychologist plays a pretty unique role because they are, have a depth in information that's at a much higher level than the majority of our people in that particular area. And so they usually pull that team together and organize. And oftentimes, it is a tier-three intervention where a BCBA can be doing tier-two and tier-three. Your school counselors are really tier-one. So in order to round out that multi-tiered system of support to, to allow our kids to engage in the classroom, that, that school psychologist plays that critical role. But I do know, at least currently, that's been probably closer to 60 or 70% of a position, just to complete the testing.
So I'm assuming that in more in-depth testing, based upon what the neuro, I mean, the psycho, psychologist can do is, would be neuropsych, a pediatric neuropsych testing. Which, I, I mean, most of the kids, anybody who has a diagnosis, I guess Selena can speak to this a little bit more. I honestly, I'm going to be frank, I don't see the value in it. I think SMS goes towards a trans-disciplinary model. I think you got, you, you do really well and everybody learns these skills. But I don't, I don't get, I don't see the value in services when we have all these other phenomenal professionals who are, who do have overlapping skills. And in all reality, I mean, I guess I just don't see it.
So, so, Karissa, there's no question that there's, there's no question that we have an unbelievable staff doing an unbelievable job. They're all tapped out, they're at their, they're at their wits' end, they don't have more time. So kids aren't getting what they need, they're, they're not getting the collaboration time that they need, they're not. So I think, and you're asking, the question I think at the heart of what you started is like, why is the focus here and not elsewhere? And I can't, what I can tell you is, we have a comprehensive staff. We have three math tutors, we have three literacy tutors, we have a literacy specialist, we have classroom teachers with small classroom sizes. So we have nurtured the academic programming of our kids to produce an excellent academic program. This is a piece that needed to be fleshed out and, and made whole and made complete. And we've taken baby steps every year, rather than in our first year together, three years ago, just to do it all in one fell swoop, not having an adequate pulse on what the needs were. So I think that, that it was intentional on our part to say, how do we do this gradually to ensure we're putting the right people in the right places with the right balance that we need? And not to say academics aren't important, but we already had a comprehensive academic programming and staffing. This was the piece that needed to be filled out and finished. Then it's finished, it's what it needs to be, which is these full-time positions, because full-time people make a huge difference on running a school. Anybody that's in a school that understands what it's like to have part-time people, it is nearly impossible to do what you need to do because schedules change, they're there sometimes, they can't service kids on this day. When you have a full staff of full-time people, you have a comprehensive system. And right now, we don't have that full comprehensive system, this is the last piece to make it whole.
So I totally, I totally hear what you're saying, but I don't feel like we have this comprehensive other area. I mean, I think it's all great, I think, I think that like our math numbers, there was, that we saw some data last year that showed that our math numbers were significantly lower in comparison to our literacy scores, right? I'd like to see that data improve to be on the same level. So, and I see our social, emotional keep on going up, it keeps on moving forward, makes, keeps on moving forward. That doesn't mean everything else should stay still.
Totally agree.
Can I make a recommendation at this point? I think we're just, this is first flush at this. So I, I'm just trying to be aware of everyone's time to get through the whole thing and, and the changes. We have many budget meetings to follow with the budget variety. So maybe, Kate, you can put together something in, in more formal to explain the multi-tiered system. Karissa, you can have some time to reflect, maybe get.
I understand the multi-tiered system. I mean, I'm, if I'm the only one who has, who is seeing this and I totally could shut my mouth and move on, I just, like, I.
I think this is not an area that I have any expertise in. So I'm very interested in the conversation and, and how it works and why we need these different functional skillsets. Because I don't know the difference between a BCBA and a, a school psychologist, other than what you guys tell me. And what they do and where, how they overlap and how it makes it comprehensive. And I totally get the point that part-time employees really screw up your model and your system. So that's the one thing I can really relate to, but I think it is worth having more conversation around to justify, you know, the, the people expenditure that we're putting behind social and emotional. It's part of our strat plan, absolutely, but we have to make sure that it's, you know, these are all good spends and we've got, you know, X% of kids that are getting value out of this, out of our total 500 kids. So that it doesn't feel like it's specialized services that are, you know, are the, the focus of what we're spending our money on.
And sure, I think it's really important that we all understand, I mean, the scope of practice of, of some of the people that are on the staff are tremendous, the, the wealth of knowledge that they have is tremendous. And I love how we use people's skills to specialize one person's specialty and everyone teaches. And I think that, I think that we're there, I just think that maybe we should, we should be doing that across the board, not just in social, emotional. Like I said, neurodiversity, neuroplasticity, all of that is well within the realm of OT, PT, speech, BCBA. You all work together to cover that. And you already have a psychological assessment, which he's already doing and he is managing load. He's just not providing services where other people are well within their scope to provide. So if we have that .5 and it's not essential at this point, whether do we want to have that? Or do we want to use it elsewhere? Or do we want to wait? That's something that I think as a board, we make a decision, as long as we have a comprehensive understanding of what everybody that we are hiring, what they can do and how we can utilize them appropriately.
And I think to that point, though, one, the one part that I think is interesting to me, right, is if you go back three, four, five years ago, the, that position was full-time. It went to 80%, it went to 50%. And the reason behind it was we needed a BCBA and then we needed social worker. So we actually cut the position down and now we're building it back up, which is the part that I think has me asking, well, wait a minute. Like, did we not understand what that shift was? Has it shifted again? Or, you know, I think the other part would, you know, to understand is, how has the building needs changed? Is it necessitating more of these services? I mean, I think the general answer there is yes, but do we have any, you know, data points that support that? Because if we're, again, going to go back to another full-time position there, one of the things we owe to the community is, you know, hey, this is why this is going back full-time, right? This is what necessitates that change.
I, I think that we have, not the luxury, for lack of a better word, I guess, luxury of historical point-of-view, Eric, in, in seeing the budget year-over-year and see how it's changed. And I do think when we did decrease that, we had unintended consequences. Where we're now having to hire out and contract out these evaluations. That's why I go back to what I was saying, Karissa, earlier, that this is about capacity. Sorry, that's my toddler. Capacity for my toddler, not to yell. But for, for that position to do its actual intended job beyond like these other services that you're talking about, right? That, so I think this is an important conversation, I agree with Esther, you probably need to delve deeper into it. But I do know that year-over-year, we decrease and I was thinking like, oh geez, it's interesting because we have had to contract out. So, I mean, I think that is a data point and that we, we need someone more than 50%.
I'd like to see hard data regarding outsourcing or having referring out regarding psychology services. What are those psychologies? Are they peer assessments? Are they therapy services? I mean, I'm just curious to see what they are, how frequent our kids are, we're recommending that. And I think that would give the board a better idea of whether we really need that.
So I know, Erin, you, you had a question, you had your hand up.
That was, I was going to ask Esther if at our next budget meeting, she could bring the numbers for what she's paying out for what the psychologist can't handle.
I just wrote down financial data points for next meeting, so yeah, happy to go through.
That would be helpful. I think the other part that would be helpful here is, what, what is next year's vision as well, right? I think the trap that I feel like we've fallen into was, we played a shell game of, well, let's reduce this so that we can fulfill this need, right? And we did that multiple times when the end goal was, we, we needed one of each, as an example, right? So I, I think it would be helpful to understand, you know, not only what the request is for this year, but what the anticipated request would be for next year or the year after in terms of people? And then support it with data so that we can then sit down and make a decision. Because the part that gets me is, you know, I remember having these conversations with Bob and, I think Cheryl, you were there. I think Sarah, you had just joined the board. And we asked the question, you know, does it make sense to be reducing this?
No, 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 other way around.
Yeah, it was the other way around, I had just joined and Sarah was there.
All right, sorry, my apologies in mixing up who was there. But the point being was, we asked the question as to why we were reducing something like this. And then the justification was, well, we really needed BCBA's, which we were contracting out at the time for BCBA's and it was costing us a lot of money, so we sort of shifted around. So I'm, I'm wondering if we just needed to take a step back and take a more holistic view of what these services are, so that we can plan for it accordingly over multiple years versus trying to shift resources around to cover it year-to-year.
Could build on that, if you don't mind, I'd like to understand what the model looks like. And who, who's doing what, how do they overlap? You know, where are the gaps? And, and how many kids are serviced in different ways? I'm sure, you know, if, I'm sure some roles touch all kids, right? But I, I don't really have a good understanding, this is not my area of expertise. So I'm, you know, I'm listening, 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 because I don't really understand who does what and how. But if I could understand the model a little bit better and what is best practice? And how far away are we from that? I would feel better. But I do think Karissa has a good point, what are we doing to support math? We know that's a weakness in the whole SAU, right? So I don't know that we've gotten to the math line yet, but.
I think it's, it's. Make sure that growth is a well-rounded.
Yeah.
As a school and we're not one-sided in that growth. And I completely agree, I think it's really important for everybody on the board to agree. Who are the people we're hiring? What do they do? What are our children's needs? And we see those needs through data, not just subjective report.
Can we agree to maybe table this part to the next meeting? For everyone, I, I do agree, this is, I think we need to spend more time in this particular area. I think we have some specific asks to, you know, help understand better, you know, sort of how that operates. Okay, I guess it puts you back on the spot again to sort of, I think we were on page three.
Yep, so the only other item on page, well, is everybody, are we good to go, Eric?
Yeah.
And the only other item on page three is very much towards the bottom, which is at occupational therapy. You'll see a reduction in 21650321. And that's because IDEA funds will be funding our physical therapy services next year for FY22.
Well, we have an on-staff PT?
We have a, she comes in two days a week, she's a contracted service.
So we don't have any part-time or full-time people?
We have her two days a week.
An SAU employee that we get two days a week for. And does she go, so she's, in our school, she's there two days a week, full days, correct?
Correct.
You're going to kill, you're going to kill me. I'm going to go on with this anyway. So PTs, there's a lot that I don't, do we have more of a need, Selena, for that physical therapist? Because physical therapists go more for gross motor. Is our OTs overstretched by doing gross motor as well?
We're in a very comfortable spot right now with regard to our PT allocation. So I feel really, I feel really good that the SAU 16 grant allocation for special education is going to cover this position for us.
That's awesome. So the next item I have, it just doesn't match up, so it's taking me a little while to find it on here. 2225, is that on your page right now?
That page is a little different than your screen, which is probably what you're dealing with too.
Yes, so at the bottom of, on this screen, at 2225 50734, where it says computer and communication network equipment, does everybody see that?
Yep.
So you'll see a pretty substantial jump of $25,000. And that's because if you were to go in our building, you will see the access points, which are like in the ceiling. And it's what helps with our Wi-Fi security and our Wi-Fi. The entire SAU this coming up summer will be replacing them across the entire SAU because they've run their course. And in our building, we have 60 of them, which is $25,000. And it has to happen, it's not a, we have to do it to secure.
Wi-Fi boosters?
I'm sorry?
Are they boosters, like Wi-Fi boosters? What are they?
No, they're the access points for each room. So each room has a dedicated connection, so that you're not trying to connect across multiple rooms. But they typically only live for three years and they have to be replaced. So we did this a couple of years ago.
That sounds like a maintenance trust fund item.
Well, I was gonna say that, that very well could be a maintenance trust fund.
So the one thing I did ask about this is because of currently where our budget is at, if this is something we could absorb this year. But if we don't do it at the same time as the rest of the SAU, we lose the buying power. So it has to be done in conjunction with the rest of the SAU. I confirmed that with Richard Pratt. I don't have anything on page five of nine. The next thing I have is actually on page seven of nine on here and it's under, gosh, it's under maintenance, which is 2610. And you'll notice in 26 done plant operations and site improvement. Given the CIP, given potential other funds, we did take out money that was going to go towards painting and carpets in hopes that we would be able to do that with some of the money that we'll be getting back from the state potentially as of November 9th. And that's the last of any items that actually was significantly any different than last year or this year, I should say.
I just wanted to let you know, you had asked the question on the percentage, so how much the retirement increase is, is accounting for in the, in the new budget?
Awesome.
So the change in the retirement is accounting of your 3% increase. It's a 1.5% of that 3% is just because of the increase in those rates. Also, the 6.5% GMR that we've calculated the health on accounts for 0.7% of the three. So between the two retirement increases and the GMR and the health, it's accounting for 2.2% of your 3% increase.
Whoa, thank you. I knew it was a staggering percentage. Thank, thank you.
Do we, I know it's early, but do we have any anticipated retirements?
I do not know of any at this time and in our, in their contract, they have until January 15th to notify us.
Yeah.
We did build in a little bit, um, as we have done in years past, in case there are retirements. But that's also offset a little bit by the difference between what we hire at and what they're retiring at. So there's like a, it's like a middle figure number. It's not, um, what they might be getting on their total buyout because there's already a differential.
Oh, I'm apparently I'm looking at the wrong one. Okay.
Let me see. I think that is, that is on the, uh, it's 11050141 provisions for retirement and sick accrual.
I was looking at the one that didn't have any of the notes on it. So I apologize. There it is. And then I guess the other, I'll ask the question, right? And this is the one that stresses me out the most, right? We, we see what our enrollment numbers are, right? We've had a series of students who are no longer associated with the school, right? You mentioned roughly 20. I mean, one of the things I think we've got to seriously consider is, you know, how, what, what does our teaching staff look like for next year? If we don't have the numbers. Right? I mean, at the current numbers that we have, uh, I don't think it would necessitate the 30.5 that we have. The other caveat there being the whole remote piece, right? We may have to plan for remote as well, which is a whole nother wrinkle to budget process.
So Eric, it was intentional not to adjust those numbers right now because there, there are so many uncertainties. So for example, if we did have to start the year similar to what we're doing right now, we would need the teaching staff. And what, so there's, you know, it's, it's hard to know. So we, I agree, we're gonna have, I think there would be some tough decisions potentially, you know, as we get closer to April and May and we know better. But we just didn't feel comfortable right now with all the variables making a definitive.
Yeah, no, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't start with that either way. I mean, I just, the off the cuff part, I mean, the, the hard part of absorbing retirement like that is, you know, where, where do you, there's not a lot of meat on the bone to begin with. It's not like you can just say, oh, hey, we're gonna shelf something for a couple more years, right, and come back to it.
The budget is bare bones this year outside of contracted stuff, right? I mean, if you look across, there's a real small percentage of things that could be adjusted.
Yeah.
Are we putting any money in those trusts?
That, that is, you know, we would have that conversation after. This is the operating budget. The trust fund stuff would come afterwards, but that is typically included in the overall percentage that, um, we presented to town. Which historically at $150,000 represents just under 1%.
Is there any way to get a read on? I know it's too early to ask the question, but, it's just such a swing to go from barely having enough room. Right? Last year. Without increasing class sizes, things like that to now, we're not sure we need all that we have. And I don't mean space, I mean teachers and resources. Because people have made other choices during this pandemic to, that company, their family. Do we really think that unless people have moved out of the, the town, that those families won't bring their kids back to our school? I have a hard time with that, quite honestly. They are so in love with paying private tuition or homeschooling. I don't know. It just seems farfetched to me.
But some, some of them may have sent their kids to private school, right? And I know kindergarten, right? That, that's a viable option, right? There's private kindergarten and that's probably where, where I would guess a bunch of the kids went. But I think it's, we, we need to try and figure out what we, what we think it's going to look like because, you know, there, there is a potential impact to our budget. Either way.
I agree. I just, I'm, I just don't want to be too short-sighted about it, you know, using yesterday to project tomorrow.
No.
Unless people have moved. And we have a lot of houses empty, not being sold. I have a hard time believing that we wouldn't have a full school once we get through this, these unusual conditions.
Questions is how long are these conditions gonna last? No one knows that.
If you have that crystal ball, let me know. I want to see it.
I guess that goes back to what Eric just said, though. I don't know how much planning we can do now. I mean, and I'm someone that's living and breathing it every day in a building, like, and you're coming from a 30,000 foot view. I don't know how much planning we can do right now. That's actually going to be accurate representation of what September is going to look like. And I actually don't know that we're going to have a clearer picture in January, which I think is part of, you know, the frustration of the budget process this year and why I think it's been so difficult to even envision a budget for FY21 is we really don't know. And so we can, I think we can all do our very best and, and as we have more months of data to collect and experience, I think it'll become a little bit clearer, but I really truly feel like, um, at, I don't, I'm not seeing myself by December being like, ah, now I know what it's gonna look like. But if we think about, you know, this, the, we have fewer, we have fewer students right now. We do not have excess staff. Right? To accommodate where we are and what we're dealing with. So it's not going to get, I mean, if the pandemic continues and, you know, we're still trying to figure out how to educate our children. It's not going to get better. I mean, we're not going to have excess capacity that we can just, you know, let people go. If anything, we're going to need more. So, and then the other option is, you know, vaccines work. People can get back to life. And we can get back to, you know, how our school was operating before. In that case, unless people decide they really love homeschooling or they really want their kids in private schools and want to pay for it, or they've moved out of the town. Then we're back to having a full school. So the worst case scenario, the worst case scenario though, is to plan for the smaller classroom sizes, right? That we're dealing with right now. Right. From a staffing standpoint, because that drives the budget. So maybe that's the more conservative way to plan.
And also figure at the rate of, the, the way the education's going with the two and a half a week. We, that 90% number was like, eh, thank goodness, but we also have to plan should that 30% number get larger and larger and be able to support those kids should that gap get bigger next year, which is there a really lo, strong likelihood that it will? So we don't want to understaff and do that, but like, I see what you're saying, Eric.
I mean, Krista, like you just said, that's why our ESY numbers went up again for next summer because we want to be able to support those kids. Whether they're special ed or not, if they need intervention, we want to be able to support them through the summer because, um, we know for those kids that need intervention, frequency of intervention matters.
Absolutely.
So I guess the only other question I have, and this is, you know, have we reached out to the budget advisory committee? Uh, and some of the next steps just around the budget?
Yep, we're in the process of that and we have the dates already set. So let me grab that. Do you guys, I'll grab that calendar off my desk. Hold on. So our, um, next, we have a meeting on December 2nd for the initial budget presentation, which is why we did the initial presentation with you folks tonight. December 9th, we have a follow-up at six o'clock with the committee first. Then that public hearing with the board meeting to follow at seven. Um, and then the 26th of January is when the FAC and board finalized budget discussion and discussed warrant articles. So the next meeting is December 2nd. That's just with the, the committee to go over the budget. The ninth is from six to seven, another meeting with the committee. And then the public hearing and the school board meeting. And then January 6th is the final meeting to discuss the budget and then the warrant articles with the committee.
And did we say the 12, the second was at, is it 6:00 PM?
Yes, they're, they're all at six. And I know I asked, um, our admin assistant, Kayla, to reach out to Kate for everyone's names because I couldn't remember everyone on that committee. So Eric, maybe you can recall everyone's names, just so I can crosswalk that with what Kayla. But I know, um, you know, I know Heidi and I know Mr. Lovejoy. But I couldn't remember everyone else's names from last year.
So I reached out to Dave Emanuel, who's the town moderator who assigns the fact committee. I just reached out to him at the beginning of the week to see if he could get back to me and let me know, number one, confirming he's still going to be the moderator. But then that he has appointed people to the fact committee. And as soon as I hear back, Esther, I'll let you know.
Yeah. And I also left him a message on his phone, Dave, so he should be getting hit from all sides.
Leave me alone.
So to answer your question, we're on it and, um, we should, I, I'm hoping to get that done, obviously before Thanksgiving. Call those, uh, fact members and give them the dates and et cetera.
Esther, did you say the meeting in January is the sixth or the 26th?
The sixth.
Six, okay, I wrote it wrong. Okay, thank you.
Tuesday, which seemed a little unusual.
That's, um, the calendar that we looked at. So maybe, Turk, I have it as a Wednesday. Have it as a Wednesday. So maybe I have the, maybe the date. Let me double check. I have the calendar right here.
Yeah, January 26th of 21 is Tuesday.
No, it's the sixth.
Sixth, okay.
Geez, Eric, you scared me. I thought I screwed up again with days, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yes, you gotta know, I'm, I'm, yeah, don't, don't mind me. I'm an idiot.
Far from that, far from that. Let me, let me do have the January 13th snow date. With committee, just in case we run into a problem weather-wise.
We're not having any snow.
I hope you are right. Our public hearing, just so people know, is scheduled for February 10th. School district meeting, March 5th, which is a Friday.
Yeah, we get back to that. I wonder how.
That'll be a whole nother. Let's hope.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's something that we probably need to start thinking about and figure, getting some guidance as to how we do a public meeting like that. I mean, yeah, we were fortunate last year in that we had that meeting a week prior to everything getting locked down. And then, you know, the town meeting had to wait until July outside. So I don't know what the, I, I don't know what the district's guidance is, but I, I think the other thing, we probably need to talk to the town and figure out what is the best way to make that happen and do so in a way that fits the state's legal statutes.
Yeah, I know we've asked for a legal counsel around that. And I, um, I think Dave's working through that and getting that information for us.
Okay.
I know he got it around the school board meetings and our next step is to get it around the town meetings.
Can't believe we just actually talked about something in March. I'm just looking forward to making it through November.
I know. So it seems like it's so far away. It's a lot of days, a lot of days. Now for them.
Okay. Helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, moving on to old business, board goals. Lots of excitement and smiling faces.
This has been hanging over us for months.
So I guess I have a question regarding this. Is there, I, I'm not that I really want to postpone it because I don't, but I would love to see data based on what our kids need. Just in gen, I mean, do we have any hard data? I know the SAU is working on giving us stuff in terms of whether it be social, emotional, whether it be literacy, whether it be math, whatever it is. So if we can have objective data related to what they need, we can better have goals to meet their needs.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I think, you know, one of the goals we had started off with, right, was, you know, supporting the, you know, the district and getting students back into school, right? I think that was poor goal number one. Yeah, Cheryl, I think you had some more, better language around that. I think you had proposed something.
I'm not sure it was better, but I really have just one goal. I just want kids to get back to school this year and we will support that. Getting their education, they, you know, that they need this year.
Well, we did that. Yay.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I, I almost wonder, Esther, if it would make more sense to just sort of take this out of the format of our meetings and just do a non-meeting or something like this, just something separate. Cause I feel like by the time we get to this topic, two hours in, right? We're holding everyone else who wants to complete their day onto a call. And I'm just wondering if maybe it makes sense to regroup as if for a, a non-meeting of some sort and just, you know, hash this out.
In the past, I think one of maybe the, I don't even know if I had Stradimbor, but we did a workshop. The workshop, and I remember Sarah, you were there, uh, just to do goals. And then the next year we did, me, we did a policy catch-up workshop. So I can certainly post a board goals workshop if, if that seems like a better format for y'all. I've listened to Brene Brown too much, y'all. I don't even live, I've never even listened to her. God bless it. Too many podcasts back and forth.
I was watching her just the other day.
Y'all.
Y'all.
Um, I, I mean, what is a board?
I agree.
I, I'd like to sort of encourage that maybe we all come to the table with two or three things that we want to, you know, bounce off of each other and just knock this out. And then that way we can be, I don't want to say be done with it, but give it the due time, the proper time that it requires versus just kicking it month to month.
And Chris, I know, I know we haven't done a perception survey this year because, because. But I know that in primary years, or I know last year, I think, Kate, you did a perception survey for families and students. So I mean, there is that data, like if you kind of wanted to dipstick, like what are some of the needs? I, I know it's been done, just not this year. And I don't think we want to know what everyone is feeling and needing. But there is that information.
That would be great to have to see what, what that was. Can we get that out?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Oh, is that, is that asking too much considering where we are and what we, I mean, we're hearing people are exhausted. There, you know, we're hitting them with, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't know that the timing, considering what.
Totally 86 it weight, if everyone's fatigued, this is not, there's way more bigger fish to fry.
Yeah, I, I, that would be my concern. I mean, I defer to the administrative team, but I, adding more work to Kate and Kate and the rest of the crew doesn't sound like a, a good idea to me right now.
Probably right.
Agreed. I don't think I was asking to give another perception survey. It was just a matter of sharing the data.
Yeah.
But if that, if that's too much, then yeah, I agree.
I think it's good to, Eric, and, and those of you that have done the board goal process before is to give the context of school board goals. Meaning that the school board, generally speaking, is around financial and policy. So it's supporting, it's not necessarily a goal about something inside the school. Like, we want to develop a math program that does this. You might say we want to support the process of improving math scores through policy and finding, you know, financial resources. So it's, when you think of goals, you just want to keep that context of these are board goals, not say Kate's school goals. And it's nice when they align and support each other. So I don't know, Kate, if you have some information you could share with the board before the workshop around your, the school goals and what you guys are working on, what your focus is, that might help drive some thinking and some brainstorming for board members to figure out how to support that. And any data you have as to why those are the school goals might help something like you're asking for, Carissa, you know, some data points. Why are those school goals?
Integrated? Can they be integrated?
I, I think they definitely support each other. It's just, it's two very separate roles, running and instructional leadership and board goals, just to. They definitely support each other.
Yeah, we, we support, we support the, the curriculum, the, the finance, you know, we support their, their goals, whatever way necessarily. But another example, right, is, you know, the, the building committee review. Like, that's one of the things we need to, you know, get back on track of looking at the building needs and, you know, planning for, you know, a refresh at some point. Because we're now, what, year 32 or 33? I've already lost track of the, the building's aged in almost 10 years in my tenure here. So, yeah, I mean, I think, let, let's. Is there a time that works for everyone to do a board workshop? I think that's probably the best way for us to sort of go through and hash that out.
5:00 AM was awesome for me. I'm sure everyone is really up for that.
Better than this time of day.
I would say it's better than 5:00 PM.
For my, for my brainpower, but, you know, I don't have to think of the goals you all do. I just have to be aware.
We do an email around this as opposed to talking about it now?
We can, we just can't copy everybody on it.
The emails get tough as far as board quorums, if you want to respond to each other.
Yeah. How about, actually, why don't we just do a working document? Just to share a, a Google document where we all have access to it and we can, you know, put some ideas there. And then you can submit the Google document as, right, as part of the write to now pace.
Yep, and it would be helpful if you have that Google doc that you're not actually asking questions to the other board members via the Google doc. Maybe hold on to those questions before you're in the public session. So you definitely could make that Google doc is what I hear you think you're saying, Eric. But you're, so it's one place you can see what other people are thinking and then have that workshop kind of, and use that document as a guide to facilitate the conversation. Does that make sense?
I think that would work. I, I think the only challenge, if I'm not mistaken, I think the last time we tried to do, I think everyone has to use their SAU accounts to be able to access it, if I'm not mistaken.
You are correct.
So I can create the document, I can invite everyone to it, but it will be to your SAU account.
Okay.
And do we want to try to pick a workshop date?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you already have meetings December 2nd and December 9th scheduled. And January 6th, if you're going that far.
Should we try to do it that first week of December? Right after Thanksgiving break? Sorry.
So we do have the Budget Advisory Committee meeting that week.
I'm wondering, what do people feel about that December 2nd? That's just an initial budget presentation.
Yeah.
I don't know. Do you want to try to meet at 5:00 and go 5:00 to 6:00 and see how much you get done before that? So it's one night out for you folks? And, and everyone?
I like that idea.
I'd like that idea. I would amend it to maybe do just 30 minutes. Because if we already have some of the ideas out, I think we can knock it out pretty quickly. If we did, you know, first 30 minutes for board goals and then followed by the Budget Advisory meeting at 6:00.
Okay, so post a, is that what people want to do?
Yeah.
It works for me, too. Yep.
Carissa, does that work for you?
It works for me.
All right, so I'll post a workshop for 5:30 on December 2nd, correct?
Correct.
Got it.
Great, that'll do. And, and Eric, you're gonna take care of the Google doc out, out to your board members?
Is going out here momentarily.
Awesome. Great idea.
All right. All right, I don't believe we have any other business. We have our next meeting set. All right. I'll look for a motion to exit public meeting at 16:00.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Sarah, second by Cheryl. Roll call, vote. Carissa?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And Sarah?
Aye.
Aye, and I'm an aye as well. I will keep wanting to call you Grace because I look down and there's Grace there. So everyone, have a great evening. Congratulations on getting everyone back to school. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Enjoy.
Happy Thanksgiving. Be well.